Well, now I call the meeting of the Waco City Council on February 18th, 2025 to order at 3:02 PM. Welcome to the work session, everybody. Work session of the Waco City Council. Welcome to all the people here in the gallery, the beautiful Boski Theater Gallery in downtown Waco. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We've got a full house. This is fantastic. And also welcome to all the viewers at home that are watching on Waco City Cable Channel. Thank you all for being here. I'm Mayor Jim Holmes. I'm joined on the dais here today by our council members Andrea Bearfield, Alicia Rodriguez, Josh Borderood, George Chase, and Mayor Pro Tem Darius Ewing. We're going to start the meeting today with a moment of silence. Okay. Now, we'll start the meeting. The first item on the business on today's agenda is the recognition of work session speakers. We have a few here today. Appreciate y'all being here. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On other, on items other than public hearing, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, that's one of these, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. So remember that. When called to the podium, please state your name and address. For the record, each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group of 10 or more individuals present, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments, and you will be given 10 minutes to address that council. But also, please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you forfeit your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate the translation services. And here's the last part of this caveat here. While public discourse is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in the meetings so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. If so directed by me, the Sergeant of Arms shall remove from the council meeting any person who, while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting, makes personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks. You'll be removed if you become boisterous. You'll be removed if you make unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping your hands or stomping your feet, whistling, yelling, or making similar demonstrations. And there are often times when you have this many people that you get kind of caught up in it, but let's, let's try to hold order here. So I'm going to call these. I know, I noticed that a lot of these cards today are relative to the Soul Ross issue that we're going to be talking about today. And before we start this process, I'd like City Manager Ford to, to, to talk about that issue because it is an agenda item here today.
Sure, Mayor. Thanks for the chance to update the council and the public that's here, and appreciate them being here. We do have what's called an informal report on the agenda today, informal report 107. It's a memo from staff to the council that lays out some of the safety considerations at Soul Ross Senior Center and our, our plans to move locations. I would like the council to hear from the community members first, and then I'll call Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Recreation, up to explain that memo more fully. And that'll give us a chance to hear from the community, and perhaps Jonathan can address some of the concerns that get raised during public comment period. Does that sound good?
Yeah. So we'll be talking about this some, and again, I appreciate everybody being here today. We're going to start out the cards, and the first card is Dennis Gremlin. Dennis, when called to the podium, is Dennis here? There you go, Mr. Gremlin. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I'm going to do an on deck here, too. Then next up is Kim Kitty. Just stand by when Mr. Gremlin's done. Mr. Gremlin?
It's my call.
Yep, I can hear you.
My name is Dennis Gremlin. I reside at 2549 Paddock Lane, Waco, Texas, 76706. Been a part of McClennan County since 1988, originally from Boski County. Start off by talking about Soul Ross. It's a kind of, in the last 10 months, become a vital part of my lifestyle, I guess you'd say. I lost my wife two years ago. People had recommended me going down to Soul Ross to the boot scootin' dance club down there on Thursday nights, and I didn't want to be about around a bunch of old fogies, not realizing that at the age of 72, I'm there. And it's a good place to meet people, make friends, build relationships. It's non-alcohol, non-tobacco, good clean environment, good music, good folks from all races. I know one thing the city of Waco considers a lot of times is money that may be brought in by facility, and you wouldn't think that the boot scootin' club would bring in much money, but there are people from Valle Mills, Crawford, Colleen, Gatesville, Hamilton, Temple, Belton, Robinson, China Springs, Marlin, that show up to this dance club on Thursday nights, every Thursday night, 52 Thursdays during the year. And I know there is a ballroom club that meets there on Saturdays. There's some crafting clubs that meet there also. I think it's just a vital part of the community, just as the zoo is. These people that come into town spend money eating out before they go or after they leave there. They buy their gas here to get back and forth. And it's just a really healthy environment, and yes, it's probably maybe for the older environment, those that are 55 to 95. We get a few young ones in there, but I just think it's a really healthy alternative that the city of Waco can offer not only the residents of the city of Waco, but the residents of McClennan County and central Texas. And whatever becomes of this facility, whether it's upgraded or, or we have to relocate, we hope that the city of Waco takes in all options and considers us, and I do appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Mr. Gremlin. Appreciate it. Next up is Kim Kitty, and then after that will be Terry Brinkerhoff. Terry Brinkerhoff, next. Kim, as you approach the podium and when you get here, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kim Kitty. Live at 9178 East Highway 84 in Waco. I've been in and around the Bellmead community my whole life. My grandparents were here, and my dad graduated from La Vega High School. So this is something that's really dear to my heart, not just for the building, but for the people that make up this organization. We have 300 members right now. We see on average 150 every single Thursday. We provide live music. It's a nominal entry fee. We have snacks and drinks, but everybody gets along. Some of these people that, we have a 100-year-old woman that comes to our facility on Thursdays, and we have a couple new couples that are in their twenties from the ballroom side of it. So there, we have a range from twenties to 100. They, sometimes this is their only social activities at all, to get out of the house and move around and not be stationary and sitting on the couch or laying in the bed. So it provides a lot for not only our seniors, but for everybody that's involved to socialize and exercise. And it's, I've been working with Jonathan a little bit. We're looking for a venue for whatever's going to happen to the building, but we're looking at options. But I want to put eyes on everything that's available so that we can accommodate the people that we have to best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitty. Appreciate you. Next up, Terry Brinkerhoff, and behind Mr. Brinkerhoff, we have Betty Samford up next. Mr. Brinkerhoff, after you get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you for this time. As you said, my name is Terry Brinkerhoff, and unfortunately, I'm age 77. I've been a member of Soul Ross since 2012. I'm retired and a registered professional engineer. Used to work at M&amp;M Mars. I understand cost-benefit evaluations. Some are straightforward. Something like Soul Ross Senior Center, its benefits are to the seniors and are not in dollar, absolute dollar values. They're full of subjective emotions, respect, and intangibles. Those of us that go, we are survivors, and we're mostly alone. We have lost, excuse me, we have lost mates due to terminal disease, divorce. We've lost friends. Our families and kids have moved away. We're facing life's challenges and issues on our own. We are mostly on fixed budgets. We come to Soul Ross to connect, to share, and to comfort others. There is no dollar value for a cost-benefit ratio. We have worked hard, paid our taxes, and done our share for society. We're now in that golden age that pays our gold for medical, legal, consumer price index that keeps going up. We don't need a new or want a shiny new metal glass building with concrete floors. We like this building, even with tri-pazard parquet floor. We tolerate the inadequate restrooms and the HVAC. But the, excuse me, but the continuing cost of them being high is nothing compared to the intangible emotional benefits that we seniors have earned and rightfully deserve. One measure of society is how they treat their elderly and less fortunate members. With luck, you too will find yourselves as senior citizens and needing the support that Soul Ross provides to us. Please don't cut us short, or worse, shut it down. We have no other place to go that provides such a positive, smoke-free, liquor-free, bite-free atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brinkerhoff. Well-stated. Next up is Betty Samford, and behind Betty Samford, we have Lori Ann Henderson. Ms. Samford, when you get to the podium, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Betty Samford. I live at 209 Merrily Drive, Hewitt, Texas, 76643. My husband Olin and I are members of the Boot Scootin' Dance Club. The Boot Scootin' Dance Club, which has been serving Waco since 1978, is one of the many activities that take place at the Soul Ross Community Center. Smoking and alcohol are not allowed, and this is what draws most people to it. This club has provided many hours of dancing and socializing for seniors as well as others. Anyone can meet at Soul Ross, which is located at 1414 Jefferson Avenue in Waco. We meet on Thursdays from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. There is always a wonderful band provided by our president, Kim Kitty, who has studied and selected the bands, which she knows we will enjoy. Without this dance activity, many seniors and others will not have the exercise and the fun times being with others. We know that the Soul Ross Center has some violations before it can continue. I would like it to continue and ask that the Waco City Council realize how important the Soul Ross Center is to all of the members and non-members of the Boot Scootin' Dance. We respectfully ask that you look into what is needed in order for us to continue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Samford. Next up is Lori Ann Henderson, and she will be followed by Rachel Salazar. Lori Ann Henderson.
Luanne?
Yeah, it probably is. A new call out for Luanne Henderson. And yes, Ms. Henderson, sorry. And then after Luanne, we'll have, we'll hear from Rachel Salazar. Luanne, as you approach the podium, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you for being here, Ms. Henderson.
I'm Luanne Henderson, 4924 Cobb's Drive, Waco, Texas, and I'm here to represent the senior citizens that occupy the Soul Ross Center. I've been a member for five to six years. I've loved every minute of it. It gives me a reason to get up in the morning, to get dressed, and it gives me a place to go. And when I get there, there's always people laughing, smiling, talking to each other, just catching up on the weekends, swapping recipes, whatever little old ladies do, and a few men are there. That's what we do. We have a good time. We're really more than just friends. We're a family. We have fun. We have a Bible study. We have craft classes, exercise classes, birthday luncheons, special speakers, games, which includes bingo, which is the most popular. We just have a good time, and it broke our hearts when we've heard that it may have to close either permanently or maybe just for a small time. But I'm afraid if we get out of the habit of having a senior citizen center to go to, we're just not going to do it. We're just going to sit at home and watch TV, which isn't good for anybody. So if there's a chance, I would love for you to temporarily, if you can, find a place for us to meet in that area, because we do have people that come from Bellmead and Hewitt, and we kind of meet there in the middle on Waco Drive. So please keep in mind that senior citizens are also a very important part of Waco. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Henderson. Appreciate you. Next up is Rachel Salazar, and then after Rachel, we'll hear from Clara Ware. Ms. Salazar, as you approach the podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Rachel Salazar, 2-800-LIVE-OKE. So good afternoon, everyone. I'm the Director of Volunteers and Senior Centers and also currently serving as co-innen CEO for Meals on Wheels Waco. I'm here today to bring attention to Waco's senior centers. For over 40 years, Meals on Wheels Waco has been running the senior center program for the city's only two standalone senior centers, the Soul Ross Senior Center and the Harrison Senior Centers. In fact, a handful of seniors have been attending Soul Ross for three decades. One of them has been attending between 25 to 30 years. She can't remember exactly how many. Senior centers are home away from home for many of our participants. They are safe spaces that provide them a sense of purpose and community. Research shows that senior center participants have higher levels of health, longevity, social interaction, and life satisfaction. Last week, we received the news that the Soul Ross Senior Center will be shut down for safety reasons. We are very saddened by this news, and although we understand, although we understand the reason for it, Meals on Wheels Waco will explore options on where and how we can continue to serve our Soul Ross participants, but we do urge the city council and the city to please seriously look at creating dedicated senior centers for our older citizens. A few hours of weekly senior programming at the community centers will not be enough. What's worse, during the summer, senior programs at the community centers are either cut back or altogether paused because of youth camps. Our seniors deserve better. They need their own dedicated safe space. In Texas, the number of seniors 65 and older is expected to diversify and more than double from 3.9 million in 2020 to 8.3 million by 2050. In Waco, the 65 and older population grew from 13.4% in 2000 to 18% in 2023. Our senior population is growing and will continue to grow. I see that the cities, when I walked in here, I saw that the city's tagline is "A City to Believe In." How about adding "A City, A Great Place to Grow Old In"? Please think about creating dedicated safe spaces for the seniors in our community. And yes, I do mean that in the plural. Seniors deserve their own gathering spaces. Soul Ross will be shut down soon, affecting over 200 seniors who use the space for dances, games, fitness, arts and crafts, lifelong learning, meals, and more. The Harrison Senior Center, while thriving, is also housed in a very old facility that likely sooner or later will be renovated or worse, shut down. Before more seniors are displaced, please seriously look at what the city can do for the senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Salazar. Next up is Clara Ware, and she will be followed by Bobby Dean. Clara, are you here? Does anybody know where Clara is? We'll skip Clara for now. All right, now we'll go to Bobby Dean. Mr. Dean, come on up. Yeah?
Somebody's getting up slow.
Oh, okay. Well, Bobby, come on up, and then Clara, we'll, we'll get you up here right after Bobby. Okay.
Bobby Dean is my name, 322 Lake Drive, China Spring, Texas. I grew up here in Waco, went to school in Waco, elementary school and high school, attended MCC and commercial music. I'm here to speak on two points, the people and the venue. I want to thank the city of Waco for having this dance since 1978. It's been here a long time. I've been playing professional music now for 30 years, give or take a year. I've been playing Soul Ross once a month, every month, for 25 years. I'm not here speaking about me and a possible job. I have seen and met many wonderful people. Elderly people, younger people, they're all, they're all there intertrod, having a good time. Seen a lot of them pass away. I've seen many, a handful, that started out coming there very sick, very ill, lots of medicine they were taking in their 70s, and within five years' time, they were off half those meds. They were driving again. They were dancing. I want you to know this dance is a very important part to these, no disrespect to elderly people. I resemble that remark. And that's okay. But they look forward to this every, every week. I play there just once a month. But we all know that once you get to a certain age, and I'm that way, I like to eat at a certain time, like to go to bed at a certain time, I like to have something to look forward to. These people look forward to this. Some of them have only this. This is it. They get a chance to be with people. They go home, and they may be by themselves till somebody picks them up to bring them to the dance, or to take them to a doctor, or to take them to, you know, whatever they need to do. I hope we can keep them in, in our minds, as I know, as I know you will, but just, just to put a, put a pin on it, that they would be considered at the top of the list, even above and beyond the cost. I know this is a cost and effect, and it's got to be done monetarily correct and for the, for a budget or whatever, but we would love to be able to, if there's a way, to maybe look a little harder to keep this place. A lot older folks don't like to, change is hard for them. They may never come out of their house again because they don't want to face that change. Right now, they're very comfortable with where they're at. They come easily. They know they're safe. They're very aware of, you know, it's, it's a normal environment for them. It would be a shame to take that away. So without me repeating myself, I think you've got my point on the concern of the people. On the venue, I realize this is a, and if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected, that this is a city sanctioned situation. And again, thank you for this dance for 78, 1978. I mean, I was a youngster when I got there. I was 37 years old. My first dance, I played there. So, I'm sorry, my time's up. If the city, my second point, if the city could find it, possibly one of these beautiful rooms here, if it's a temporary thing where they're safe, easy access. If it's a permanent thing, if the city had a building that they're not using, that they could dedicate to this, to allow this dance to go on, that's what we'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Okay, now we have Clara Ware. Is, when we've got a microphone, thank you, Monica, for accommodating there. Ms. Ware, how are you doing today?
My name is Clara Ware. I live at 1120 North 10th Street, Waco, Texas, 76707. I've been going to Soul Ross for 30 years now, 25 or 30 years, and I volunteer up there. So I would just like to see Soul Ross Center, you know, the city to find us somewhere to go while they renovate this place, because we've just been together for so long until we just like family. So for us to have to leave, you know, and go somewhere else and to meet, us meeting new people, you know, being around, they have their own way of what they doing at these other senior centers. So then we wouldn't have space, you know, to do what we have been doing. So I think it would be nice if you all could find us a place to go so we can still be together. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. I appreciate you being here today. Our next speaker is Sabra Christensen. Sabra? Sabra? Sabra Christensen. Come on up, then. After that will be Raymond Suarez. Sabra.
Sabra Christensen, 1900 Woodgate, apartment 1112, Waco, Texas, 76712. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the older people. I am one now. I started Soul Ross about eight years ago. I've been a member since, and I just love it. And it's been, it's been grace, saving grace for me. I moved here and made friends and their family. I just love them all. And what I really wanted to do is just to, I wanted to make handouts, but I didn't know how many to make. So I'll just read, "What makes, Dancing Makes You Smarter." And it reduces stress and depression, increases energy and serotonin, improves flexibility, strength, balance, endurance, strengthens bones and boosts cardiovascular health, increases mental capacity by exercising our cognitive processes, dynamic and rapid-fire decision-making creates new neural paths. And I appreciate the opportunity of spending those years there, and I hope I can continue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Christensen. I believe what you're saying about dancing. I believe in it. The next card is Raymond Suarez. Raymond Suarez. Okay, maybe that would be for tonight. And then I also have a card, and you said you may not want to speak, but I'll give you the opportunity. Shirley Burke, if, Ms. Burke, if you'd still like to speak, we have time. If not. Okay. All right. That is, is there, that's it for the cards. Is there anyone else you'd like to speak on a work session agenda item this afternoon? Okay. Again, I appreciate everybody and their words, and we will have an informal report here in a little bit. We'll now recess the regular session and reconvene into work session with a report from City Manager Ford.
Thanks, Mayor. In lieu of my typical sequencing and report, given all the speakers, would like to go ahead and invite Jonathan up to present on informal report 107. And then at the end of that, I can come back to my normal report.
Yeah, agreed. This is great. So we're moving the report on the, on the Soul Ross Center up so we can accommodate folks that are visiting here today. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, brother. Thank you, council. For our opportunity to speak, to provide an update on our Soul Ross Senior Center, which you've heard from our community members before, but a little background on this facility and the process of where we're at and how we've gotten here. The Soul Ross Senior Center, it is located next to Soul Ross Park. This is along Waco Drive, which you see there in the middle of this graphic. And on the left, you have the senior center. In the middle, you have an updated renovated park, which includes a skate park and a playground, pavilion area with a restroom. And then on the right-hand side, you see our sports court area to give you a little visual of where the center sits. But it is a 15,000-square-foot facility located along Waco Drive that was originally constructed in 1951. It did serve as a synagogue and a congregation here in Waco. And then in the middle of the 50s, into the 50s, with the support of the Lions Club, it was purchased and eventually became the city's first community center and recreation center for Waco. Since that time, and it was established in 1969, it was next to the, the Charlie McLaren or at the time, the Waco Soul Ross Tennis Courts. This is an older park property, was originally established before Cameron Park in 1909. So quite a bit of history in this area. I mentioned the middle section. I mentioned the middle section did go through of the park, a renovation in 2014 to where tennis courts were converted to the skate park and we saw a transition of different types of activity. Wanted to know, as we've gone and when you're dealing with, the structure was built in 1951, there was obviously, there's some building agent that's taken place. We've got a great group and as you've heard from many of the organizations here of current user groups, the people not only been taking place for a couple decades now, but you see they're also attracting new members. And so, our current user groups at the building does include Mills on Wheels. There's three different bridge clubs that play throughout the week. Also, the Boot Scoot and Dance Club, Dance USA Group, and then also an art group as well. But as I mentioned, being the age of the building, there are some current conditions. Our recent inspections of the facility show a deteriorated condition and there are required repairs to the roofing, plumbing, electrical and fire safety infrastructure. Multiple critical safety concerns, including an absence of a sprinkler system and fire suppression, were alarmed and there were also multiple violations under the International Property Maintenance Code indicating that significant repairs would be needed for continued occupancy at the center. Additionally, a Fire Marshal's report also identified several major failures and critical safety violations. And so, corrective actions were immediately recommended to ensure occupant safety. Because of these concerns, it is recommended that we close the building to the public and look at relocation options of current programming to other facilities, which I'm going to get to after we see a couple of slides. Just looking at some current status area, you see some floor depressions, cracks in stairwell walls, which indicate foundation concerns, damaged tiles, ceiling holes, creating fire hazards in the upstairs area. And so, those are some pictures, just the reality of the condition of the facility. And first and foremost, with all of our facilities and activities and really one of the values of the city of Waco is safety and keeping our communities safe. And so, we have to look and prioritize safety for our community members and our program participants first and foremost. So, it is very important, as we look at this recommendation, of making sure that people that are participating in our programs, we are in a safe condition and we are taking their safety into account. To look at something like this, so the communication is also very important. And it has been a really good experience for myself and staff over the past week to sit down one-on-one with the leaders of the organizations that take part and the participants at the Soul Ross Center to really hear their needs, their current states, what they would like to see. It wasn't too long ago that I sat here and talked about, you know, our movement towards more comprehensive senior programming. And while it is very unfortunate to shut this senior, this center down, we know the impacts. They're heartfelt and they're real, they're scientific. And so, but as we work towards the future, we see that good communication and working with our groups and coordination amongst those is very important. And so, this could be seen as an opportunity to streamline and strengthen some of those programs. But I will say and I'll tell everybody, it's not a matter of if you're going to continue your programs, it's our responsibility to figure out the where. Even this morning, we were looking at the multipurpose center. We were looking at Knox Hall with the organizer of the Boot Scoot and Dance Club, also discussed several other options. We have more space at Doris Miller now to accommodate arts and crafts areas. And we've also been looking at different options such as the clubhouse, multipurpose center and the Harrison Center for the Bridge Club. So, these conversations are taking place as we move forward. Along with the programming, very important for us to make sure we're taking care of the property as well as we evaluate the options. So, we would work with our facilities department to secure the property and look at those future options, as I mentioned. And whether that would be a relocation, a new building, some sort of new development, some sort of parkland, those are options that we want to explore. We have been starting that process and really looking at the history of the property and be able to present those options in more clarity moving forward. With that, any questions? Yes, sir.
Any questions for Jonathan or comments?
Sorry. Obviously, I support whatever we can and whatever we need to do for the senior centers. I am one senior, and I may be going up there to that boot scootin' club. Anyway, the question I have for you, Jonathan, is when you went to Knox Hall, what did y'all think about Knox Hall and the ifs, ands, and the what-ors and what-ifs and the how-coms and how-come-not?
Sure. Well, in full, I was at the multipurpose center, me and a staff member today. I was at that first part of the tour. I myself did not go over to Knox Hall. Brittany Combs from our department did take Ms. Kitty over there to look at that facility today. I will say, from my perspective, it checks some boxes. There's some internal coordination there. And obviously, these are public facilities that people are able to use. But the Soul Ross Dance Club, when we talk about it, it's a full, it used to be a gymnasium. You know, it's a full gym. And so, there is a lot of space in Nodell, when you're having 100 to 150 people. They have tables on the side, but it fills up pretty quickly with a dance floor and a band. So, we are looking for quite a large area. We've considered some of our gymnasiums that we have available, it's a scheduling deal. But Knox Hall checked some as far as size and just accessibility, parking areas and being a city facility.
One more, one more question. Someone here, one of the speakers, suggested maybe one of the rooms here in the convention center. Would that be possible? I know that we book sometimes a whole convention center for whatever, weddings or conventions or whatever. Would that be possible, Jonathan Bradley? Is it way out of line to put a temporary, where it won't cost the participants anything, but for us to allow them to use that until? I'd like to keep them all together because, you know, separating them in different community centers, I don't like that idea. But trying to keep them all together in one place, is the convention center way out of line for us? To allow that?
Yeah, I think it's a fair question that I'll want to dig a little deeper into, certainly, with our goals that we have with the convention center to bring tourism and activation. We're currently about 40% occupied in the building. We want to take that to 70% occupied over the next year or two. That would create some scheduling conflicts, certainly, and irregularity for our senior groups. So, it may not be the first thing that I would look at, but I'm not gonna, I would not pull it off the table.
Yeah, I'm just grasping at different.
Because I think one of the things that you picked up on and I clearly heard too is you've got various consumer groups here and there's some benefit to trying to keep them together in a singular facility.
Right.
I don't know that we're going to be able to accomplish that, but that can be a goal. That can be a goal and that's something that Jonathan and me can work towards.
That was, I took questions. Thank you, thank you, Bradley, thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah, Jonathan, I thank you for your work on this and, you know, hearing the testimony here today and just knowing how vital these meeting spaces are for our seniors and knowing that kind of globally, there's a real epidemic of loneliness, you know, going on, both in Europe and the Americas and kind of everywhere, that how important the, this type of programming is for our seniors in our community. And I'm sure I speak for most of, if not all of our council here, that we want to make sure that this programming has good continuity wherever it lands. And hopefully, we can give good policy direction that senior programming is a very valuable public policy goal for us so that we want to at least continue what we're doing now in a way that folks can continue to enjoy these services in the way that they've enjoyed them. And that maybe that's in a different facility, time being, but hopefully, we can get a more coordinated strategy going forward to be able to assist our seniors who we love and we value very much. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan, for this informal report. And thank you, all the people who have come out to talk about this. I've been, I've been old in my head all my life. I spent every summer with my grandmother, so I had no idea that the over 55 center was not for children. I had no idea. On Friday, we went and had lunch with my friends. So, I understand the importance of generational, the ability for generations to come together. One of the number one priorities that we have and the stewards on this council is public safety. And I think what we know is that that building isn't really the safest. And what we would not want for anyone, but especially our seniors, is to put you in any danger. So, we've got to do something, right? So, you said a place, Jonathan, that I didn't think about, but I'm like, is it big enough? The clubhouse. Now, maybe. Maybe parking is a thing, is it the stairs? I mean, because what we don't, you know, again, we're, we have to be very mindful of our, this particular audience. You know, I know that it is difficult to even consider our existing community centers just because it's programmed so heavily. And, you know, Councilmember Rodriguez, you mentioned the convention center. What I would hate to do is displace them in their regularly scheduled programming because whoever is in town, I mean, sitting on the CVB Commission, I mean, we're, we've cast until, what, '29?
I was just saying.
No, 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 I hear you.
Temporary, not a permanent place.
Sure, but I mean, that would.
In the place for them while we buying them something.
But I just think that that, this place.
Didn't want y'all misunderstand what I said.
No, 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 I got it. What I don't want, and I'm sure you don't want it either, is for the, okay, so this is a temporary place, but only this week. And then next week, we've got to do something else and da, 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 da. And, you know, so I, I mean, Knox Hall could work. I think out of all of the place, well, and I guess the question is, in order of the usage, which one would be more consistent?
And that's where we're at in the process is, one, we identified city facilities. That maybe the shoe would fit a little bit. And so, now we've started doing tours with the groups and looking those and talking to them about the specific needs. And from there, I mean, Waco, we've got a lot of facilities and some ideas. And that's part of it, even this morning, some of those ideas came from, well, what about this place? Or what about this place? So, the solution, I think, is there, but we are, we've got internal city facilities and then looking at other options. So, going through that list and making sure we're talking to them and getting that.
But, thank you. And I think, as Councilmember Borderoos stated, we all understand the importance of our senior community and making sure that there's adequate places and programming for seniors to thrive. The good Lord willing, we'll all get there. So, we do understand those things. This council specifically has, as Jonathan mentioned earlier, been raising questions about our programming for our seniors and doing a deeper dive in what that looked like. So, know and understand that this council is working really hard, and our management staff especially, and programming staff, to find a solution. We don't know what it is yet, but know that we're working with human mind.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just echo the other council members' comments and say that I appreciate your work on this and I think you understand the importance to the council, if we get this right. Thanks, Jonathan.
One more question. You brought this up to my mind, Andrea. The clubhouse, the Cameron Park clubhouse, what happened there? Was that a no or a how-come or what-if?
It is an option, especially for some of the smaller groups. I've talked, one of the arts group, also the bridge clubs, is that an option? From the dance perspective, maybe the ballroom, boot scootin' buggy, probably too many people. But what we're looking at, you know, a lot of these senior activities, now the dance in the evening, would take place in the day. So, where are our facilities that maybe in the daytime or the weeknights don't have that activation as the weekend? So, clubhouse is definitely an option we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Jonathan, thank you for the presentation. And thank you all for joining the city council work session this afternoon. I'm really happy to see the activation because it seems a lot of places that we have for public space and public enjoyment don't have the activation that we like to see. And this one is, all the folks here, I'm happy to see that they're using the public, the public facility there. So, I'm excited that this will continue. And again, I think as somebody said, this is an if, it's a where. So, we're going to go through an evaluation process over the course of the next couple of months, I guess. And then you'll come back to council in hopefully, the not-too-distant future to figure out what the best place will be. And that, and that decision will be made with feedback from, from all of you here. So, again, I'm happy that we're running a very transparent process. And this council member Bearfield said, and as you demonstrated in some of these pictures, there's some safety issues that we want to make sure everybody is safe in our, in our facilities. So, I'm confident to say that the boot scooting will continue. And we will, I'll be out there, wherever the new venue is, I will be there boot scootin' with everybody, I promise. So, anyway, thank you for that. And again, thank you, everybody, for being here. And now, thank you again, Jonathan. We can continue with the work session.
Can I back up for just a second? I want to make sure I'm clear on my marching orders. And I'm sure Jonathan would appreciate it too. In the IR, we said that we would attempt to have relocated programs in March and April, which our next meeting is March 18th, because we have a month break between this date and that date. Is it the council's preference that Jonathan come back with a briefing of where these programs are going before we shift them out of this location? Or is your direction to move forward in shifting them out of the location, finding them a home, and then we'll brief you as it's happening or after it's happened?
The latter is fine.
The latter.
And then I guess we'll continue to get feedback on how that, on how that works. But it sounds like you have, just by the few that we mentioned here, we've mentioned a half a dozen options and I think all of them are great, just whatever makes the most sense. But I don't want to slow things down either.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Mayor, I'm going to work my way back up to my typical report for the agenda today. I wanted to highlight one employee recognition item. It's a, it's a quick highlight of note that our warming center for this cold weather event that we're under, starting here in a few hours, is going to be opening up at the multipurpose center beginning this evening at 8:00 PM through Thursday, at least Thursday at 10:00 AM. I want to say thanks to the staff and emergency management, see Ryan Durkrow out in the audience, as well as our team members from Parks and Recreation and the Health District, who all worked together to facilitate this service to our community. For the few that need it, it's very important and I'm very pleased the staff is going to provide this service over the next couple of days.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the location again?
It's a multipurpose center.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. And we, there's a chance it stays open a little longer than Thursday. We're just going to play it by ear on what the temperatures end up being. We do have six informal reports on the agenda today. You covered IR 107 in depth. We have five others as well. In, out of respect for the time that we have left in the work session, I'm going to just call for any questions you might have or comments on those IRs. I'm not going to brief them individually.
Any questions or comments on any of the informal reports, guys? You know, I can't let this one go, Bradley.
I do, I figured.
I'll keep this to 20 seconds. But, yeah, the I-35 lighting, the work that you guys did and Charles Lees, you're out here. Thank you so much for the, I know you kind of led the charge on, originally, I think in council's mind, it was going to be a $12 million solution. And we asked you to kind of go back and try to figure out a way to make it work. And I think we ended up with, it's under a million dollars that we're. it's under a million dollars that we're, that we're going to be able to activate the, the bridge lights that have become iconic. And I, I think it's gonna be beautiful, a nice welcome to Waco. And everybody enjoyed those lights, the frontage lights on, as they cross over the Brazos River on I-35. We'll get to enjoy those again in the very near future. So, thank you. That was the only comment I had on the IRs.
On public hearings tonight, we've got five. Laura Wagstaff, our planning manager from Development Services, will be providing an overview of those in the work session if we have time. If not, we'll cover that in the business session. And we have 34 resolutions on the agenda tonight. I'm gonna highlight just a couple of them. First, Resolution 144. It's seeking your approval to purchase 28 direct source diesel exhaust filtration systems. And these would go on our fire apparatus. As you are aware, those are diesel engines and they, at times idle in station and at locations, which does have a, an exhaust that has a cancer risk, particularly to our firefighters. And this council and the management team and the fire department team certainly knowledgeable of that and want to take another step in the direction of cancer prevention for our valued team members over at FIRE. This is just one of many steps that have been taken. And appreciate the chief, the chief walkers here, as well as deputy chiefs that have had a hand in that over the years. It means a lot that we're coming up with creative solutions to reduce our cancer exposure in FIRE. That comes with my, my recommendation, certainly. Resolution 146 approves the submission of our Texas Anti-Gang Program Grant for $1.1 million. This application for a grant to the governor's office would continue our multi-jurisdictional tag efforts that have been funded through the governor's office and housed here in Waco since 2019. I highlight this each time that we have an application or an award for the governor's office, because it's just, it's really become a significant part of our crime prevention and intervention strategies. And as one, only a handful of communities in Texas has access to these funds and a Texas Anti-Gang Grant, I also always want to communicate how well it's working. And so, just as a note, you know, enforcement efforts coming out of the tag have contributed to more than 800 arrests, in many cases, of violent offenders in our community in 2024 alone. Additionally, in the last grant year, we had 55 documented gang members arrested for felony offenses, 24 gang members arrested for misdemeanor offenses, and more than 130 firearms seized. This plays a part in that great presentation that Chief Victorian made to you recently about our violent crime statistics heading in the right direction. This is a big part of the puzzle. So, grant application comes to you tonight in Resolution 146.
Bradley, sorry, Mayor. Before you go on, and I'm not gonna use the word peer cities because you know I don't think we have any. How many, you said not many cities get this grant, and I am incredibly appreciative that we do so consistently. What percentage of mid-sized cities are awarded this grant?
The last time I looked at it was five to seven communities in Texas. Looking for some, any PD members want to help me out?
Lubbock is probably.
The closest sized is Lubbock.
Okay.
Yeah, so it started in your big metros. It started in your big metros and, and governor's office approached us pretty quickly. And, and appreciate the leadership team and PD for, for being, you know, arms wide open for the resources.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just echo your, the data on this, and it's, it's in the package. I didn't find the page, but super interesting of, this didn't exist four or five years ago before we worked with the, the state government to get it launched. And just the data behind the success is really compelling. And I hope that we can continue to get this tag grant. And, and I appreciate the city and the state working together to, to fight crime, obviously, and to fight this, the, specifically the anti-gang program. We've had some success here.
All right, Mayor, there's two ordinances on your agenda today. Ordinance 159 is an emergency reading to designate JP Morgan Chase Bank as a depository for the city of Waco and awarding a three-year contract with renewal options to JP Morgan Chase. Council received the recommendation for this designation just about a week ago at your budget and audit meeting. And then ordinance 160 is a first reading ordinance to amend language in our utilities code to clarify language relating to required reporting by our permitted industrial wastewater users and brings us in alignment with the requirements from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report for today, and I'll take any questions from the council.
Any questions for the city manager?
I don't have a question. Have a comment, Bradley, to you and staff for Resolution 157, keeping Sandtown in the bid for the development of that project. And I want to thank you. And I know you and staff will be a part of remembering Sandtown and how important it is to me and my community. I just want to take this little time to say thank you to you and staff.
Thanks, council member. We're gonna, I think Paul Kane's gonna come up in a few minutes and show some updated imagery of that particular project. And so, I definitely know it's important to the council, important to you, and important to the staff. So, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for city manager Ford on the preview of the agenda?
There being none, we will now move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2025 dash 125 through Resolution 2025 dash 158. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? We are removing one for a separate vote. That is, this is 2025 154, which has to do with the Baylor Barathon. And Councilmember Borderwood has a clear conflict of interest on that one. Anyway, so the comic, I'm not sure why.
Has a record.
Yeah, he is. Yeah, I think he finishes the top three on a regular basis. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2025 dash 125 through Resolution 2025 dash 158, except for Resolution 2025 dash 154. The next agenda item on the, is the work session items, and that's 2025 dash 112 through 2025 dash 117. City Manager Ford, would you please introduce the first work session?
I sure will, Mayor. And just to update the council and also those in the audience, we're running about 20 minutes behind our scheduled allotment on timing. And so, we'll, we'll work to make that up and see how that goes. And if we're not able to, I'll, I'll push someone off the work session list. We'll come, we'll have them come back at a later point. But we've got work session 112, discussion of the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFER, as we call it, for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Blue Kostelik, our assistant city manager, is at the table with Jennifer Ripka, partner with Weaver and Tidwell, the city's audit firm, to present the results of the ACFER for this last year. This audit, which we have done annually, satisfies both the requirements from the city charter, as well as requirements set out by the Federal Single Audit Act and related US Treasury and OMB guidance. I don't want to steal any thunder from the team, but I'm excited to hear the results. Is that, is that too much?
That is not, sir. Thank you very much. Mayor, council, great to be with you. To be able to present this, these results to you, another, another great year. But before I turn it over to our audit partner, Jennifer Ripka, with Weaver, to go over those results, I do want to pause and actually acknowledge the, the folks behind the scenes that do this work. Your, your accounting team works very diligently year-round to make sure that we are properly accounting for every dollar that goes through the city. And it's no small feat. That is, that is millions upon millions of dollars that, that run through the city. So, this is a culmination of their work. But the audit, the external audit, what they do, is probably a good six months' worth of work, specifically on this, outside of their, their daily task routines. So, headed by Colin Booth, our managing director of finance, and our assistant director, Ed Henderson. You've got a great team. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer and let her present the audit communications.
Thank you so much. My name's Jennifer Ripka, and I'm the partner on the engagement. This is our first year taking over for the external audit with Weaver. I have 18 years of experience. I lead our government services group at the firm. And I primarily work with governmental entities here in the state of Texas. But for the most part, I work with a lot of cities across the state, large, large cities or fast-growing cities that have a lot of economic development agreements, private partnership agreements, et cetera. So, that's typically my niche at the firm. Also, at Weaver, on this team, Claire Wooton, she met with the Audit Committee and went through the results. She has 14 years of experience. And then I have Kaylee. She was our in-charge. In terms of the audit process itself, we perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as generally accepted government auditing standards. And we perform the single audit. You all both have federal financial assistance, as well as state financial assistance. And so, we do have to perform the single audit over both of those during our external audit. We also complete compliance testing. The largest piece of that compliance testing is going, going to be the Public Funds Investment Act. This is our audit timeline. I won't go through that. But, you know, it does, as Blue mentioned, it takes a considerable amount of time to, for your staff to get through the external audit. It's not a short, you know, one-month time. And specifically, when you're switching over accounting firms, it does, you know, create a little bit of, you know, angst on the team, just because they're unsure of the things that we're going to be asking for. And, you know, from an auditor's perspective, we may be asking for items that have not been asked for previously. And this is just our overview of our planned approach and then the, the report itself. We will issue an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that can be placed on a set of financial statements. And then on that federal and state financial assistance, we'll also issue an unmodified opinion on that as well. We did test five programs under the federal and state bucket. You know, one of those is the tag program. As was mentioned, that program is very unusual here in the state of Texas with regards to mid-size to large cities. And so, when you're looking at receiving an unmodified opinion with regards to compliance on not only the tag program, but ARPA funding, CDBG, home, and not receiving any findings with regards to that, that is just a testament to the group that you have here, not only in the finance department, but departments across the city. So, when we're looking at it from an audit standpoint, you want to see an unmodified opinion, of course, but also no significant deficiencies and no material weaknesses from an internal control standpoint, both on the financial statement side, as well on that federal and state financial assistance. The other piece of that is, you know, when you come in as a first-year audit firm, not having any audit adjustments or any uncorrected misstatements, that's also a testament to the group that you all have here, working at this city. So, kudos to them. This is our significant risk, you know, breakdown. There are quite a few risks that relate to a city, but in terms of management override of controls, that's pervasive. It's across the board at every city that we do perform an external audit over. And then revenue recognition for both charges for services and then federal and state grants, those are two that might have items that are going to be individually immaterial, where you, you know, are gonna do both analytical procedures, as well as testing items that are very small, but could have a material misstatement when looking at them if there was an issue across the board. When we're looking at both of those, we noted that there were no items, no findings that we needed to report. Everything was as it should be. This, in terms of the required communications, I won't read through all of these, but we're required to note that you all did implement GASB statement 100 this fiscal year. There was no impact to the financial statements themselves, but that was a new implementation. We're required to look at significant accounting estimates during the course of our audit, looking at the key factors and assumptions with regards to those estimates, and noting that there were no bias associated with them. This is information about GASB statement number 100. It's not that exciting. And then in terms of this list of items, there were no significant unusual transactions, no suspected fraud. And we encountered no difficulties during the course of the audit, no disagreements. And then we did receive the written representation from management, noting that there were no items that were withheld from us, no litigation that we didn't know about, no fraud, et cetera. There was no management consultations and no other findings that we need to report to this group. I'll turn it over to Blue.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council. At this time, we'll be happy to take any questions you have on the audit. Any questions or comments on the audit?
No findings are always good.
I agree. Yeah, thanks a lot, Blue. And I appreciate it. As Councilmember Bearfield said, the music to my ears, as a former COO and managing the audit team, is that there are no significant deficiencies and no material weaknesses. And I appreciate the work of Weaver on both the, the general audit and this, the single audits on the state and federal grants. Again, great work on the first year. It sounds like everything was, was fine on the communication. And I want to, and we talked about this quite a bit at budget and audit, so I'm not gonna go in too deep here. But I also want to thank the, the internal accounting team, as you already did, Blue, and, and Colin Booth, Director Booth, the work. Because I know internally, it's a lot of work to get the communication with the Weaver team and make sure you're dedicating them to get all the answers and also do their day-to-day job. So, I've been through it, and it's, and it's, it's a 24/7 process. So, appreciate it, appreciate the work of Weaver and appreciate the work of our city Waco accounting team. Any other questions?
No, I just want to echo that, that same sentiment. It seems as if every year, as soon as the accounting team, kind of as soon as the applause dies down for the work they did putting this together, it starts again. So, that's not lost on us. And to hear the high marks that we're receiving because of their diligent work and, and attention to detail, it makes it a lot easier, I'm sure, to keep that work going, because you're not having to go back and fix any past mistakes, because you're doing it right the first time, which, again, is, it is not lost on me and certainly, certainly lost on this council with how difficult that is to do. So, really appreciate that from the team. I appreciate you guys coordinating tie and jacket today as well. Did not want that to go unnoted.
Oh.
I like that.
This is Weaver, Weaver is green.
Absolutely.
And, and the mayor joined in as well. All of the, all the finance and accounting folks just deciding to wear green for finance and accounting day. That's great.
Insistency.
Appreciate it when they're on brand.
Yep.
It's a full-service audit, right there.
That's all I, thank you, guys.
All right. Thanks again, guys. The next item, city manager Ford, is work session 113, the issuance and sale of COs.
We're gonna keep Blue down here for a few more minutes. He's gonna be joined, though, by a couple of team members, I think. This next work session, Mayor and council, is a discussion of the proposed issuance and sales of certificates obligation and my recommended 20, fiscal year 24, 25, capital improvement program. Blue's at the table, our assistant city manager, and he's joined by Blake Roberts, managing director of PFM Financial Advisors. Is Esther not joining us?
Esther is not here because of the weather up in the metropolitan.
Oh, goodness. Okay, well, we'll miss Esther today. But the team's gonna present on our proposed bond issuance for the FY '25 capital improvement program and the bond financing plan. This presentation does include an updated recommendation based on feedback that we heard at the February 11th budget and audit meeting. And Blue will cover that in detail here in just a few minutes. Blue?
City manager? Mayor, council, here to present the debt issuance and capital program that, that is gonna be supported by the debt issuance for 2025, fiscal year 2025. So, we are gonna start it off with the current debt profile. I know we, we discussed this in depth a week ago in, in budget and audit committee. So, we are going to pare that back a little bit and just hit the highlights. Based upon the changes that we are recommending to you today, we have rerun the numbers, the plan of finance. So, Blake will cover that. And then we will go into the rate impacts and then questions and answers. So, looking first, in, in order to tell where we're going, we gotta know where we are today, right? So, in 2025, we are sitting at about 1.4 billion of total debt. That's principal and interest. If you look at just principal alone, you're looking at closer to a billion, just slightly under. And if you look at our profile as a whole, 370 million, that purple bar at the bottom of those stacks is what is truly tax-backed debt. So, of our total debt load right now, we're sitting at about 27% So of our total debt load, right now, we're sitting at about 27% of our, our total debt load is that property tax backed debt. Everything else is user fee supported. So as, as a user is using those services, water, wastewater drainage, those are the fees that are covering that debt. But on a, on a typical home, that's the purple bar that is supported by your property taxes. Overall amortization, fancy word for how quickly are you paying off that debt? Really, you want to see around that 65 to 70% over 10 years. So we are, we are looking financially strong in our debt profile by having about 60, about two thirds of our debt rolling off within that 10 years. And this is static, so this is a snapshot as of today. Looking over the last 15 years at the, the total issuances by year, we're really looking on the left side of that chart, the, the new money issuances. So over 15 years, we've issued new money, $986 million in debt, with a, a large portion of that over the last couple of years, a lot of projects that we're catching up on. So some, some significantly higher issuances than our, than our typical. But that is where we are as far as the last 15 years. As Ms. Bearfield said, there are no peer cities to Waco, Texas, but we are, we do like to look at ourselves against other lesser cities and try to.
Wait, hold on.
I'm joking, I just got to say that.
Well done, well done.
Was he talking about Lubbock?
I was, I was going to say that one, but I wasn't going to call him out specifically, but you know.
We're going to have to clip that and send it back to the team in Lubbock.
We, we should, we should. We are taking a comparable set of 10 cities, similar populations, similar services. I mean, no cities are going to be exactly the same in how they operate, how they run, and what services they provide. But these are, these are a comp list of 10 cities that, that are about as close to, to Waco as, as possible. So those are listed at the bottom if you want to read through those. Where we are as far as tax backed debt to total assessed valuation, our debt load versus what the city is actually worth on a, on an assessed valuation. That blue bar is the city of Waco through the years, the purple bar is our, the average of our peer cities. And as you can see, even with those last two significant increases in the, the amount of debt that we've issued, we, we are remaining below peers, but we are catching up to where the peers are. Broken that out into the 2023 tax backed debt to, to total assessed valuation for those peer cities, so you can see in 2023 how each city within that is, is shaking out. And you can see Waco right there at 1.56, right, right below. Even at, even at the, where we are in, in 2024, where we're going to fall out is about that 1.6. So still right around the peer city average. We will see, once all the, the act for's are published, where our peer cities are. And we'll report back to you on that. Another debt metric that is kind of common across cities is, is debt per capita. Again, this is property tax backed debt per capita. So you can see again, in the blue bars, Waco still trending below our peers. Peers are, are right around that 2146 mark, $2,146 per capita. We are trending right now in fiscal of '23 at 1,783, but because of the last year issuance going up to 2,096, so still right there around that. And again, broken out in that fiscal year '23 debt per capita. So right, right there amongst our peers. And you can see how different cities are managing their debt load, how they are investing in, in their capital infrastructure. Moving into the, to the actual debt funded CIP for the year, again, last, last week, we did present you with a plan that was around 158.4 million dollars in total issuance. We have revised that, so this is what we're coming back to you. And we're going to spend a little bit of time on this one to walk through those. So in the general capital, which is, which is truly your, your tax backed debt, this is, this is where your property taxes are supporting this debt. These are the projects listed. We originally had almost $49 million, we're reducing that by just over $9 million. We're doing that for, for certain projects, they're going to be highlighted in yellow. And you can see, we're, we're taking the debt issuance off of the Police Department Crime Lab and Property Room. We do, we, we believe we have about $1.25 million of, of savings that we're going to have in a, in an existing capital project. And we are going to, we're going to pull that down and put that $1.25 million towards the architecture and engineering, the A and E, the design phase for that crime lab and property room. So we will, we will get that started. I know this project has been in the works and, and planned out for a good 12 years now, so we want to at least get this started and rolling forward. The next big changes are going to come in your bridge maintenance and your bridge reconstruction. You can see we're taking the bridge maintenance down from 2 million to a $1.3 million certificate of obligation. That reduction will impact the city in certain ways. I mean, it's, it is going to.
Amber.
Amber Alert. All right, so going down and reducing to, to $1.3 million in bridge maintenance, it's not going to remove any sites from our plan and what we're doing on the maintenance of, of those bridges. However, it is going to, to reduce what, our, our ability to get after some of the action items that we have. Right now, Waco has about 73 action items remaining from the text dot bridge report. We are going to address what's most critical out of those using this $1.3 million. We're going to get as far as we can, and once we're at the end of the list, that's when we have to make some operational decisions to, to either do a budget member come forward to request more money to finish those out. But we're going to start with this $1.3 million and get as far as we can, and then we will come back. So on the bridge reconstruction, going down from 7.5 million to $4 million, that's three and a half million dollar drop. What this is going to do is it will delay the New Road Bridge Project letting that was scheduled for about October of 2025, but now we're thinking that's going to come at the earliest in the summer of 2026. And then on the, the last change on the general capital is the Better Streets Waco.
As we go here, I'll just ask the question. So on that one, since that one's not going to be until 2026 anyway, we can kind of just roll that one into the next year's likely CIP budget, right? The three and a half on the New Road.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
Well, I mean, not, not lock it in.
Prefer to call on that question, on, on the actual letting and the timing of that one.
I guess my question is that the timing is such that it's being delayed long enough that we don't need to leverage it this year, we can leverage it in the next budget cycle?
Yes, sir, that's what we would have to do. We would have to leverage it in the next cycle. It's about a seven and, I think it's about a seven and a half million dollar expenditure total. And we have some of that money, we're needing a little bit more to get to the, the total amount that we need. We have to do that in the next sale, next year.
Got it. So in your minds, Council, next year's sale will be not as large as this one. So we're carrying forward a $7 million expenditure in a, in what'll probably end up being a 25 or, $25 million program, a 30 year next year's program will be that project.
Got it, thanks, Blue.
All right. The last on general capital change is the Better Streets Waco program, the reconstruction from poor to good. This, Council, I want to remind you, is the bucket that we had, it was going to be district by district, so to allow the, the districts to, to request that $3 million to put to some of the, the poorest streets, the, the most problematic streets. With the, the programs that we have, in order to be able to keep our, our timeline of getting just the fair to good, getting, getting back up to, to that good standard, we felt it was, it was most important to keep that $30 million total in, in that. So we are going to have to reduce that $3 million bucket this, this year. Moving down to the next change is in drainage and stormwater, the Spigotville Road Regional Drainage Improvements, we had $5.7 million. We were really waiting to see on the audit results and everything else, how, how the drainage fund looks, and it is very healthy. So we do believe, after talking to the department and after talking to, to Mr. Leest, that we can find that 5.7 million within savings from additional projects, moving money around. So we don't really feel the need to, to issue that 5.7 at this time. We have, we, we believe we have that in cash. In the water and wastewater, we are, we are taking two projects and we are going to partially fund those with COs. But as you can see, the $4 million decreases in those two projects, we're going to pull out $4 million of cash. You know, we've, we have been working on how we're using our, our network, networking capital calculations and reserves. We, we feel very comfortable that we have that $4 million right now. We know in excess, we have no less than 6.1 of excess cash in, in the water side, so we're going to pull 4 million of that 6.1. On the wastewater side, we have no less than about 5.5 million, so we will pull that down as well. And that's, that's just excess cash that we have right now. So a total of $8 million drop in the water wastewater issuances. So we are essentially bringing our total issuance down by almost $23 million, requesting to do, instead of that 158.4 million, down to 135.6 million dollar issuance. Mayor Council, I'll pause here to take any more questions you have on, on the project list.
Is this, is this your last slide in the presentation?
It is not, we're going to go through the plan of finance, too.
Okay. Um, any comments or questions at this point? I know this is kind of new, we looked at this at Budget and Audit last week without these recent, recent observations. So we're, I think all of us are kind of absorbing them here a little bit. I'll just make a general comment and everybody can think about what they're going to say here, but I just, I know that, I said some of this at the Budget and Audit last week, but a lot of great data presented there and presented here today about just the market value of the city of Waco in the last 10 years or eight years has gone from 8.7 billion to over double that, 19 billion, which is a, is a great testament to a growing city and we feel great about that. And we're still able to maintain great debt ratings as, as you have done and shown us and are about to show us again, I think. And we, and every year, we've, are addressing a ton of deferred maintenance, and we talk about this every year, three to four billion or now, I think it's maybe five billion of infrastructure that we're trying to, if we could fix it all at once, we'd, if we had a $5 billion check, everything, every street in the, in the city would be in great shape. So we're chipping away at this little by little. But I think what kind of hits us is, and, and Blue, I think you showed that, or ACM Costless, you showed that, that slide, which kind of gave us all a little bit of pause and maybe flip back to it just for a second. The one that shows the, the debt that we're, that we're putting on. This one. And you can see the, the middle column of, of the new leverage that we are putting on. Again, if we could put 5 billion on all at once, we could, but we're chipping away at this thing a little bit at a time. Before 2016, we were putting on anywhere from 3 to 13 million to try to get all these roads fixed up, which is why we're dealing with a lot of deferred maintenance now, and we've all learned that the longer you take to work on a road, the more expensive it gets. So the trend in 2016 to, you know, currently, or at least for a few years, there was between, right at 100 million, somewhere between 60 and 100 million each year of, of new debt. And trying to accelerate some of the programs in the last couple of years, we've zipped it up even, even further, again, being way behind on deferred maintenance. So the question was, and now flip back to the, to the, that one. Just are there places, because we know we can't keep continuing to borrow 240 million dollars a year, because it aggregates, it starts adding up and it puts burdens here. We're, we're, we're great, we're in great shape now, but we're, we're trying to figure out which projects can match other initiatives and which ones do we, we just have to get done today without putting a burden on our, our taxpayers. So I appreciate you guys doing the extra work on looking at recent trends, measuring this against peer cities, because we've always kind of been behind in leverage and now we're kind of catching up. And I think we're going to, and we may have more needs, and, and as, as Councilmember Bearfield said, every city is different. But I, I like the one that you showed also, flip back to that, the one that shows the actual cities. It, it kind of shows where, you know, Denton, Georgetown, you've got some Temple, some similar, there's some similarities in all these and some dissimilarities. You look at some of the older cities or with maybe older infrastructure, Abilene and Amarillo, who may have stayed on top of their infrastructure as it went, and we're trying to catch up. And then go back to this, I'm sorry to keep doing this, but the slide that shows kind of where we're behind, but we're catching up on debt per capita and debt per TAV. Yeah, that one. It, it just shows that we're, we're, we're starting to close the gap and we, we may even bump up on, on this composite city average, but we've just got a lot of work to do. So I appreciate you doing that and then also making these measurements on objective, because I think the, the charge was, let's, we're, we're, let's test where the guard rail, where are we as far as too much or not enough? And in, in the context of we've got $5 billion that we need to, to work on. So I still think we're in great shape here, again, in a per capita basis and a, and a TAV basis, taxable or total asset value for the, for the city. So, and I appreciate the thoughtful treatment of how we're, we're doing this and giving us some options on, maybe we don't need the 158, and maybe it sounds in, looking at the big picture, going down 158 to 138, what difference does it make? But I think directionally, we're, we're being as careful and thoughtful and being good stewards of, of taxpayer resources. So I think some sequencing that we talked about, if it's not going to be ready for another year, let's not leverage it now, let's just leverage it next year or if we have the cash. And also very thoughtful use of, of, I know we have good unassigned cash balances, our balance sheet's in great shape, and where we can utilize some of our liquidity and cash on some of these other projects, I think makes a lot of sense. I guess, all that being said, is the, and I think of any, and I'll let the other council members speak on this, but go back to the, yeah, this is kind of our worksheet for the day. We're, we're using cash, the one that bothers me the most is that 3 million on the port of good, you know, of all of it. And I know it's only 3 million, but that was the one where we kind of, kind of said we were going to look at neighborhoods and kind of, and move it around. And the rest of it makes sense because we're pushing it more to available cash. And even with that, I'm sorry, I'm taking up all the time here, but I think we're still spending right at 60, if you add up all of the streets related funding in this year, it's still around 60 million, which is a, a big number compared to what we were doing just, you know, six, seven, eight years ago. So I don't know, I'll, I'll let other folks weigh in on, on what this looks like, but I want to commend staff on, on being very thoughtful about what we're doing here, because we can't continue to borrow 250 million a year without it kind of catching up, even though we need to spend 250 million to, to catch up on our infrastructure needs. There's, there's some capacity issues that we don't want to push unnecessarily.
Blue, thanks. I'll echo the mayor sentiments that appreciate the work you guys have done to, to get the borrowing amount, total amount down. Could we in the near future get a report, because we've, we've had the benefit of strong cash reserves, but obviously this, you know, the other side of spending money, spending cash is we want to make sure we maintain those strong cash reserves.
Absolutely.
So could we just get an update on that as to how this, this, this change affects that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We, we will get that done, especially with the act for just coming out and being approved. We're going to, we're going to update our, our reserve balances and we will, we will get that report out.
Thank you, Blue, and Blake and team. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One, in the, when we were looking at the comp city slide, and you gave Waco's 2024 numbers, it was 2.96. Yep. What was the comp average city number? Because I'm sure it went up as well.
It, it might go up, we don't know yet.
Okay.
We just know, we just know what our number will be, because we have our 2024 act for done. Once we, once we see all the others, we'll add that in.
Okay. Um, we're approaching budget season and, you know, making the decisions that we've made to try to get as much done as we can. When we go into next year, if you could help us think about, as Mayor mentioned, the, the streets project was by neighborhood was something specifically that we kind of worked towards to call out. And so that is something that will eventually have to be addressed because one- will eventually have to be addressed because one, it should be, and two, we said it would. And so, you know, we're going to try to do what we can do. We understand time is what it is and money is also what it is. But, you know, we, we're going to have to address it. And I know we are, and I especially am guilty of dreaming big and in color. But we have to, I, I'm trying to figure out what is it that we're really going to be able to bear? Because no, Mayor, we can't continue to borrow that high rate of number. But, you know, as we're going into the next budget cycle, maybe help us understand what can we bear? What can we do? Because we're going to have to find a way to do something. And for our general public, understand that the things that you all want are not free. And so we've got to figure out a way to make, make it all make sense for everybody so that the, our residents aren't feeling slighted, but we're not trying to figure out how to sell fish plates to pay, get the things done. And so as we approach budget season, I want you to kind of, if you could help me go into that mindset, because this is what, you know, y'all, Mayor, you and, and your beautiful financial minds have the ability to do. But let's figure out what it is. Because I know that, that we have to bear some burden, but what is it that we really can tolerate? What's the best use of our cash reserve? What is our best use of debt? What is, you know, what does it look like? You know, I know that we have not looked at, you know, we're, we don't want to say the B word, but we have not gone to the public in over a decade.
She means bonds. I just wanted to clarify that for the record in the minutes.
I was just going to let it linger, but hey. You know, but what does that mean? Right. Not on the mic, anyway. What does that mean? And, you know, just, and no, not that we're going to do it. So everybody calm down. But what, what did it look like? And what is it really going to cost? And what is it that we will really have to bear? I need to see all the things so I can figure out how to make the best decisions.
Yes, ma'am. We can give that to you.
We have more presentation after this?
We do.
Yeah, let's, I'll save mine.
You already said the B word anyway.
I laid it.
All right, Mayor, Council, it's time. We'll, we'll go into, I'll turn it over to Blake to go through the plan of finance.
Thank you, Blue. Mayor, City Council, good to be with y'all this afternoon. I do have my team member Carlos Allen in the audience. He's an important part of the financial advisory team. I'm Blake Roberts with PFM. Esther could not be here. The weather north of the Brazos is a little bit worse than south of the Brazos. So we will jump right in. Many of you heard this last week, but this is an overview of the game plan to sell certificates of obligation or bonds in the capital markets in a couple of months. We did adjust the numbers down to reflect the more recent changes that you see before you. We have flexibility up to about 173 million and a notice of intent that you would approve today if that number sort of goes back up after discussion today. The bonds will be sold in April to fund citywide capital improvements that you just saw. We are going to sell bonds via negotiated bond sale. We have an underwriters RFQ out on the street that we will get responses back this week on. We'll bring that team before you in April. We will, if there are refinancing savings that generate benefit to the city, we will also bring that before you in April to approve the parameter sale. However, the action today is to approve the notice of intent issue certificates of obligation. That is what you'll authorize today. Key dates, April 15th, today is the approval of notice of intent. April of 15th, after the petition period ends, we'll come back to approve the bond sale, what is called the parameters order, which authorizes the city manager and CFO to act on behalf of the city to actually go forward and price bonds and lock in rates. And if the market cooperates, we will then close on those bonds in May. From a historical perspective, this is an overview of interest rates since 2000, just to give you some perspective on where rates have been. You know, there's been a lot of headlines around the Fed and inflation and tariffs and what that all means. I, I will say that from a historical perspective, we're not as high as we've been, nor are we as low as we've been. We're sort of about in the middle now. That trough that you see in 2020 and 2021 reflects the pandemic when the Fed slashes rates to zero and our market followed suit. We have, of course, since seen the Fed increase interest rates and so we're back up to about a little north of 4% estimated borrowing cost for the city with these bonds that we're expecting to sell in the spring. On a more recent trend line, you can see kind of what we call our yield curve, which is where you borrow along years one through 30 of your bond, bond years. This graphic shows you since the Fed began to cut its benchmark rate in September of 2024, we're actually up a little bit in our market. So what that says is that investors are weighing all of the data around sort of still stubborn inflation, potential inflationary policies, and then federal deficit spending that may keep yields a little bit higher than where we've been. So here's an overview of the project list. That is, again, the cold list that Blue has put forth before this presentation began. Won't spend too much time on this. You've seen the worksheet. If that all goes forward, this is an overview of the existing debt balances of the city of Waco and then layered on that what the proposed 25C slash O, that stands for certificate of obligation, what that would put your debt balances after, after this issuance. And we've broken that out by repayment source. So 305 million on the general obligation tax supported side, 280 million water, 291 sewer, 56 million solid waste, 12 drainage, 129 million on your TIF, and then for the first time, the street maintenance fee would support about 7.3 million. As I mentioned, we are evaluating the ability to refinance existing bonds that have call options on them. At this time, those provide minimal savings. We would only bring that forward to you in April if those savings levels improved and were advantageous to the city. An overview of the illustrated financing results. We did change to sell a portion of this as 30-year bonds, but most of it will still be 20 years or in. Assumed rating, AA1 from Moody's, AA plus from S and P. That's the second highest rating possible under the way that the rating agencies score a local government bond. So something to be very, very proud of. We have not yet visited with the Moody's and S and P for this cycle, but we expect a similarly positive outcome in our meetings with them. Mentioned with the change to a little bit of this being a 30-year bond, the true interest cost from a week ago is a little bit higher, about 4.14%. That also reflects some market movement. So I want to be clear about that. We expect in the range of 4 to 425 for a true interest cost when we price the bonds in a couple of months.
So they were about 20 basis points just in the last couple of weeks.
20 basis points. Again, let's call half of that's the market, half that's the extension of a piece of this to be 30-year bonds.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. At what point will we get the, the rating? I mean, is there, what's the timing of getting the Moody's and S and P?
Yeah. Great, great question.
Is that, is that on another slide?
So we'll, we'll visit with them in March. We are working to pin down those exact dates for meetings. As I, as I put in the timeline, we'll, we'll sell bonds in April. So before we sell bonds, we have to post the offering document for investors to review. We expect that we'll have ratings back to include in that offering document by the end of March.
Got it.
And we'll certainly keep you apprised of the outcomes of those meetings.
Okay.
For, for the folks that want to see numbers, this is total existing debt service for the city, citywide. So again, importantly, this is across all repayment sources and all liens. So water, sewer, solid waste, those are of course paid back by user charges, TIF, TIF bonds, drainage system bonds. This reflects a total self-supporting, what we call self-supported debt service requirements or payments from non-tax, non-citywide tax sources, the TIF notwithstanding because it's isolated. And then you have what's called a net, net tax-supported debt service requirement. That's the portion of debt that appears on citizens' debt service portion of the city's tax rate. This is broken out for this specific issuance. So how it will be repaid by repayment stream. And then we've layered on the two slides together to show you the total expected debt payments by repayment source with existing plus new payments from this bond. This is the same information and graphical depiction. This is just the debt service portion of, of, I'm sorry, the debt service tax rate portion of the bonds. The brown bars are existing. The green is what would be new to give you a sense of how much will be paid back by the INS portion of the tax rate. And again, this is the same or similar slide, but it's total self-supported debt service plus total tax-supported debt service, total overall payments by the city after this proposed bond sale. And then to put a pin in your question, Mayor, this is the, the specific dates that we have in mind with council approval of notice of intent today, published the first notice on the 22nd, second notice on March the 1st, will meet with rating agencies at the end of March, sometime between end of month, March and early April, we'd have those ratings and come back to you with an April the 15th approval of a parameters bond sale, price bonds in April and close in May. Lastly, your bond ratings. Again, very, very important. You heard Blue talk about the strong reserves of the city. You've heard the mayor mention the tremendous growth and the market value of the city is measured by all taxable properties. That's reflected in really strong bond ratings of AA1 and AA plus. And I really want to pause on this slide because that's an incredible rating. Many of your peer, but less than cities that Blue mentioned, have similarly strong credit ratings. And we again expect strong results this cycle to the rights to rating commentary, strong growing economy, well-managed finances, strong reserves. One thing that is baked into the rating at this point, sort of weaker socioeconomic indices, and they do take a forward-looking view of your CIP. So the large numbers that we're talking about, they have already been made aware of, I think, what's coming down in terms of a CIP of the city of Waco. So want to make clear that they will not be surprised by these numbers when we bring them forward in April. So that's my overview of the plan of finance. After that, answer any questions. I give it back to Blue.
Mayor Council, we have showed you this and we went over this in detail last week at the, the Budget Audit Committee meeting. But really what we're looking at is those, those user fees supported. So especially on the water and wastewater, how that affects us going forward right now with the fiscal year 25 total CIP plan and 89.7 million dollars in that, that leftmost bar graph. That's kind of the breakout in there in a utility bill, what would be, what we build out to our, to our residents. Based upon that plan, moving forward officially year 26, you're going to see about a 5.7% increase going up from a total bill of $136.41 per month to $144.20. And that just reflects those increases in the, the capital programs that we have in order to cover the debt service that, that we're, we're taking on, but also the cash that we are putting out to, to work for, for these systems. We do look to, to moderate that over the next few years and try to bring that back down. So as the, as the capital goes out, the, the amount of increase per year continues to decrease.
And I think, oh, go ahead, Mayor. I'm sorry.
My question on this, Blue, was that 89.7, was that adjusted in, in your cut, your cutback part? Or is that still?
Mayor, this is Paul in the back. I'll jump in here. This has been moving pretty fast. This is based on the 89.7 and the rates are based on those debt, debt issuance. And we have sent our updated debt numbers to our rate consultant and hope to have that information back here in the next couple of weeks. And then when we actually go to sale, we'll have that rate information for council to consider then. So it should be a bit lower than what's shown on the chart today.
Then I think just so the audience can see, and it's in that dark blue box at the top of each column, the 89.7 that we are putting in this year, or maybe slightly less as Assistant City Manager Kane just mentioned, and we're actually gearing this, at least in our projections, back to 59.9, 55.5, 44.9. We're not locking those in by any means, but we're, we're trying to be sensitive to debt loads and, and planning and they're, they're very likely won't be these exact numbers, but we're trying to feather in as much as we can as far as borrowings and debt load into addressing our infrastructure problem or issues. So yeah, great, great slide. I interrupted you, Josh.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I just want to, I mean, for the public too, I think our council and our, really our staff have done such a great job with our utility bill through an extreme inflationary environment, you know, keep holding it under the rate of inflation for a long time. So I appreciate that good work. No one wants to see their bill go up, but they know that it's going to good work. And I appreciate our staff's mindfulness about our average consumer and our average resident having to bear this burden.
Yeah, I'll jump in really quick and, and say, one, it's great to know that, you know, our, our rating isn't impacted by any potential increases to the future CIP, at least that we've projected for already. And, but I'll say with that, to Mayor's several points earlier in terms of being mindful of what we're, what we're issuing and how much debt we're taking on, I think, you know, when you look at personal finances and you start to, to think about, you know, what's important, how do, how do I prioritize paying for this? And, and I think it's a good exercise for us as a city and as a council and, and staff to get in, really looking at what do we have that we can pay for right now with cash that's important to us to make sure we get done, that we don't have to issue debt for. And obviously, us issuing debt as a city is different than, than individuals doing that. But again, I, I really appreciate the exercise and, and the effort that was put into looking at, hey, what can we cut out of, of this issuance to, to still make sure we're funding in our CIP? And sometimes it means you're, you're taking away certain things and, and having to find new ways to pay for them in future years. And, and with that, lastly, I'll just say that when things are important to you, you prioritize them. And when you prioritize them, you make sure you find a way to get them done. And I think that we need to get really clear as a council in keeping with this exercise of, of being fiscally responsible to continue to identify key priorities and make sure that we find ways to get those funded, even with a continued eye on, on monitoring our debt load.
Mayor Council, just final review for you. So everything that we've talked about today, so the total CIP plan that we have, this is not just a debt issuance, the total CIP plan, right around that 176.7 million dollars broken up by general CIP, water, wastewater and other funds. So you see the cash and the, that we are deploying in this, this CIP cycle. Again, as, as Blake mentioned, 4.14 all intruencer's cost on this issuance right now. Hope the economy improves and we get a little bit better rate, but that, that's the planning rate for now. That utility rate impact, we will update you. That, that 5.7 was based upon what we had as of this morning. So we will, we will continue to, to bring that back to you. So again, looking at our, our debt, our needs, the metrics, you know, it's, it's pulling all of those levers, levers that we have in order to, to meet the needs of this city. With that, Council, take any other questions that you have?
Any further questions? I know that we kind of interrupted you a couple of times, but anybody have any other comments or questions?
I have a quick question, and I'm not sure who's the best to answer, but can you just tell me for my background, a little bit of moving some of the obligations from 20 years to 30 years? What goes into that consideration? How much did we do? Just, just, I'm just trying to learn.
A lot of it, Councilmember, is the, the size of the project, what, how, the, the scope of that project as a whole. So this one that we moved out to 30 years is, is the Bullhide expansion. That is a, that is a very expensive project, but it also goes into not only just, you know, the overall cost, but it's the life of that asset, how long that we're going to have that asset to, to benefit the, the, the ratepayers. So you always kind of want to match the, the debt with the useful life of, of the improvements that you're making.
Thanks.
So like a, like on a fire truck, we'd issue like 10-year debt or so.
Yeah. And that's what we have in here is on the, the, the fire apparatus would be a 10-year issuance. So.
Trying to match those as, as much to the life as possible. Good question.
Any other comments? Great presentation. Again, we're all about smart growth and executing the vision and it takes all these parts. It's not a, it's not a simple, it's not a simple pathway. And you guys have done a great job. I appreciate staff's work on, on being very thoughtful about how we deploy our, our liquidity and our debt and, and addressing all these infrastructure needs. Thanks.
Thanks.
Next item, I'm going to leave it up to you, City Manager Ford. What, what works as an item do you want to go to next?
Well, you know, you know, I don't know if anybody's been on a plane.
Well, you know, I don't know if anybody's been on a plane lately and the pilot will say, we'll make that time up in the air. That's what I said earlier.
By sitting at the gate? We're going to sit at the gate?
We're running out of runway here. So I think what we'll do, I'm going to bring back the Animals' presentation for a later council update, because the final two presentations, we do need some council guidance specific to projects. And so I'm going to call Work Session 116, the Discussion of Design Plans for the Waco Welcome Center, as our next presentation. Lisa Blackman, Assistant City Manager, will be at the table. Hannah Anderson, our Administrative Officer from Economic Development and Tourism, is joining us, and David Nesbit, Architect and Owner of Nesbit Architecture here. They're going to be walking us through the design plans, budget and next steps for the new Waco Welcome Center, which will be moving from its current location near the Ranger Hall of Fame Museum to the retail building at the AC Marriott on Sixth Street. I look forward to this presentation and we'll turn it over to Lisa or Hannah?
Hannah's going to start us off.
Let's do that. Hannah?
About five minutes?
You take the time, y'all got about 15 minutes total.
Okay, great. Thank you, Bradley. Hi, Mayor and Council, it's good to be here. I'm Hannah Anderson, Administrative Officer for Economic Development and Tourism, and I'm joined today by Architect David Nesbit and Assistant City Manager Lisa Blackman, and we're very excited to share our progress on this project. I will breeze through a background on the Waco Welcome Center and then hand it over to David to present some renderings for y'all today. Lisa will go over the budget and timeline as well as next steps. Our current Welcome Center is located at the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame and Museum and, or at that site, and it served approximately 36,700 visitors in 2024. This city council approved a lease with SC Waco Retail last May for the new downtown location, which is on Sixth Street between Mary and Jackson. Their contractors continued preparing the space since last spring until the city obtained possession on November 1st, 2024, and we were able to begin finalizing the design. Our official rent commencement date was February 1st, 2025. As you can see, this location is in a prime downtown spot on Sixth Street between Mary and Jackson, adjacent to the Magnolia Silos as well as other attractions and restaurants in that area. Staff have done an excellent job maintaining the current space, ensuring it remains functional as a tourist information center. Shout out to Becky and her team, but this move will provide an opportunity to create a more inviting, accessible and vibrant hub for visitors and locals alike. The new Welcome Center will be much more than an information hub, it will be a destination. Looking ahead, this move provides an opportunity to showcase what makes Waco unique, right in the heart of downtown. With easy access to local shops, restaurants and attractions, visitors can explore more of our city on foot. Some key features of the space will include a curated gift shop, offering unique gifts for visitors and locals, event space, a reservable meeting room, art showcases and much more. It's intended to be a space for both tourists and locals, and staff expect that the new location will lend itself to increased visitation in an accessible and convenient spot as well as expanded hours of operation and increased gift shop revenues. The renderings we're about to see are preliminary. The project has just gone out to bid and some finishings may evolve as we go through that process. A key influence on the final design will be the Madden Media Branding Initiative, which we presented to this council on January 21st, and so we want to ensure that the space aligns with the city's tourism, marketing and identity. The updated design you'll see prioritizes functionality, accessibility and visitor engagement, creating a welcoming environment with clear signage, quality merchandise and an improved layout. Collaboration between staff and our expert designers have been essential and we're committed to ensuring that the final space reflects Waco's unique character and hospitality. So I won't spend too much time on this, but David has been the architect instrumental in shaping this project. He has over two decades of experience in Waco, and for the last five years, he has led Nesbit Architecture. And so with that, I will hand it over to David.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to work together on this exciting project for the city of Waco. We have had a delightful experience with city staff just looking at various different options for the use of this shell space as we look to expand what the city Welcome Center will ultimately be. So just walking you through the plan from right to left, on the right-hand side you see Sixth Street with the area in green being an exterior lounge. We see this as an area that is about, it's about 12 feet wide from that existing rail to the building face, and we have that as currently shown as an outdoor lounge seating area, place to help encourage passerby's to come and enjoy that space and find out exactly what the city is about and what kind of areas of interest that they can find to do around the city area. The area in blue, kind of in that T shape, is to the right-hand side or to the top of the page would be the retail space. So immediately opposite of the door, when you walk in, there is all the merchandise that you might have from the Welcome Center or a perfect opportunity to display other items for the city of Waco. Currently, what we're showing is the, in that retail area towards the IT media wall to the south, we see that all as a flex space. Currently, we're showing that as a furniture type arrangement to promote conversation, but it could be, it could be used for functions, for some hospitalities, for tastings, all of those kind of things. We'll talk about it here in just a little bit. To the south of the page are a couple of restrooms, very important. And then to the top of the page, we have a office for staff, storage area for some backstock, could also serve as a future office with some expansion, and then our IT room, which helps to drive the technology that would be supplied for this space. One thing that we'll see in the images here in just a second is that IT media wall where we see a very large screen media center that could be used for a whole wide range of uses within that space for electronics. To the left, you actually look through some glass and double doors into this hospitality area. We see that more as like a gallery type museum space. There's going to be a large curated table from a local craft and designer that would be for that space and an opportunity for displaying artwork from our local community as well as any other wares from this region. There'll be, there'll be some millwork in there with a sink for supporting any kind of events that would happen within that space. And then lastly, to the top left of the page is, in green, is a workroom. It already has an existing door that goes to a little breezeway, so it's a perfect spot for like caterers to come in and set up for that hospitality room or for staff to have their own private entrance. So again, as Hannah mentioned, these are conceptual by nature, but this would be more of a twilight shot looking at that exterior. Again, we're showing some outdoor lounge top furniture. One thing that we are adding on this, and keep in mind, this is just a placeholder, but there is a sign that is mounted just to the right of that door. And right now, we just showed a concept for a sign, but that's yet to be designed. During the daytime, you can see, we have a, we have a very nice thoroughfare before you even get to Sixth Street. So on the left-hand side, it's about 12 feet of public sidewalk. We have that other 12 feet just inside the railing that we're showing, some planters and seating area, again, just to try to highlight those three windows that you see. And you can go ahead and go to the next one. So when you walk inside that space, the first thing that you will be greeted with would be the retail space to the right-hand side. In the distance, you can see the media wall. We have it split into quadrants, but there's all kinds of options for being able to display, you know, games or medias or whatever you need for that. And then on the, one thing that you'll see a close-up of in just a minute is on the right-hand side where the guy with the guitar is playing, we have a sign graphic, again, that is a placeholder. We took a little bit of liberty and inspiration from the Las Vegas signs, so you'll notice that that is just intentional as a placeholder. But the idea is to create an iconic space, place for social media, for posts, an identifier for, here we are within this space, you know, come check it out. Looking back towards the retail area, that is a movable kiosk. Everything is set up more towards, like, there's not a set counter where it's more like a mobile station where people can move around. It's more, the design of this is more about flexibility and use of that space. Yes, there is retail that is there. Actually, the amount of retail that is shown in this space is roughly double of what you currently have within the existing Welcome Center space. It's just more compact and set up in a more organized way with this type of millwork that's built in. And then below that, those open shelves are locations for some additional backstock for them to be able to resupply during the day. To the left, you can see that there is the media wall, and we also have an opportunity for some custom wallpaper graphic, and this is a nod towards some local artisans. It is depicting iconic scenery from around Waco and the region, things about our history, but it's done in a way that's just more driven by some of that local artist work that's within this region. And you can see just again, populated this with some furniture, but it is a, it is meant to be a flex space. As we move towards the hospitality area, we have this glass wall. There is, you can see to the left, just outside of the glass wall is a round table with a pendant light over the top. Again, if this were vendor-driven, in other words, if you had a tasting or a local artisan wanted to come in and set up their fairs, is a perfect spot for people to come in and experience that. Within this hospitality room, it again is a multi-space room where it could be used for meetings or gatherings. To the right-hand side is a place for display of artwork. Again, we're thinking of that being curated from local artists. And then along the back wall is a hospitality counter with some undercounter beverage sinks, I mean beverage coolers. To the left is a sink, and again, we have a large media display on the wall for entertaining meeting or meetings or content. Above the cactus chandelier, again, is meant to be a placeholder, but we wanted to evoke some kind of depiction of a local craftsman coming in to create this chandelier that has meaning to the region of the city of Waco, and that is yet to be designed, but it is a placeholder. And then again, just another view of that room. From the standpoint of economy, we've done our best to just, we're leaving the ceiling exposed throughout most of the space and putting in the walls just where we need it. Floor is finishes or more of just stained, slot polish and stained concrete. And then this would be that work area to the back left, if you remember that plan, mostly a staff-driven place, but we do have a counter and a work bar set up where if a caterer came in, there's a place that they could set up. There's also a desk back there or just a serve staff with their own, you know, coffee and refrigerator.
Okay, thank you, David. So Mayor and Council, I will be providing an update related to the construction budget and timeline. So this project is being funded through our hotel occupancy tax, also known as HOT revenue, and our budget is $1 million that was allocated this fiscal year. The construction of our new Welcome Center is not only a strategic investment in our tourism economy, but it's also an entirely appropriate use of HOT funds under Texas state law. HOT revenue can be used for the acquisition, construction, improvement and operation of visitor information centers, provided that the center directly serves to promote tourism and the hotel industry. By leveraging HOT funds for this project, we ensure that our tourism infrastructure continues to support local businesses, cultural attractions and hotel occupancy growth, aligning with the core purpose and use of the funds. So the estimated cost of this visitor center is currently projected a little over $1 million. However, the actual cost will not be finalized until we receive the bids from our contractors next, or from the bidders next month. So to ensure that we remain within budget while maintaining the integrity and quality of the project, we have identified three ad alternates that will provide flexibility in decision-making on the final bid pricing. The ad alternates will include the wood wall paneling that you noticed, we had it in the front retail space and in the back hospitality room. The purpose of the wood paneling was to enhance the aesthetic appeal and warmth of the interior. The second ad alternate is the glass wall and door and double door structure, which creates a modern open concept separation between the front of the house and the back of the house hospitality suite. And the third ad alternate is the art wall hanging mechanism, which is designed to provide a professional system for displaying local artwork and exhibits that reflect the cultural and historical significance of our community. These ad alternates provide us the ability to refine the project costs while ensuring the core components of the Welcome Center remain intact. In addition to the ad alternates, we have identified opportunities to reduce costs by handling certain items in-house. For example, the media wall will be developed and installed by our Information Technology Department. This allows us to pivot as needed, ensuring we maximize the use and available resources. Next slide. So our next steps include finalizing the bidding process and returning to you in April to consider awarding the construction contract. Construction would begin in May and finalize by October, and then we would begin to move into the new space. So in summary, our goal today was to present you with an update on this new Welcome Center project, and most importantly, to gather your valuable feedback on the design to ensure it meets the needs of our community and our visitors. With the city council set to review the construction contract next month, or in April, excuse me, we anticipate breaking ground in May and then transitioning staff into the new space in October, which a ribbon-cutting ceremony would soon follow, making the completion of this important investment in our city's tourism infrastructure. So we are excited to hear some feedback from you, and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff on the space?
Yeah, I really, obviously, this is a 100% improvement in terms of location of where it is. I really appreciate the use of the hotel occupancy tax for this project. It seems like a good, solid, strategic use for those funds. I think the renderings look great. I realize that some of the particulars are just kind of imagining, you know, what might be, but to me, it makes sense the way it's laid out, the way this will attract people. Kind of, we get a lot of pedestrian traffic down there. So I'm definitely excited about it, and I appreciate the work and thoughtfulness that you've put into this, both the design team and city staff. So thank you all.
Thank you all, especially to our CVB staff, DMO staff and Lisa in the city manager's office for pulling all this together. Thank you, Ms. Nesbit, for your vision and eye in this process. I'm closer to it than anybody in my role as Chair of CVB Commission and have seen it through a lot of things, and I appreciate the somewhat painstaking process to make sure we get this right. This is oftentimes the first experience that our visitors have in our community when they intentionally come to find out more about where they are. And it has to be a strong first impression, but because it's experiential, and I think that all of those aspects are, have been delivered in this presentation, I appreciate so many of the things that I saw, especially the nod to, we're always going to have a Purple Rain nod in the screen. And was, was that a homage to Steve Ray Vaughan? I saw a guitar player in the corner. I was like, is that going to be always? Josh, that's your house band. I think that the neatest thing is that, you know, this, what you're looking at now, and again, these are just thoughts, but it appears that this is a, an homage to Waco's own Kermit Oliver and the Hermes scarves that he designed and that are, you know, even hanging in the Smithsonian right now and just kind of a nod to his style. And we appreciate that because we, I think what we wanted to do in here is lift up our artisans and our makers in our community because we've got so many. And so I think that between the table and the chandelier and the design and the wallpaper and how the things are done really will give people an opportunity to see who Waco and Wacoans are beyond whatever you thought before you got here. I imagine that that Waco sign will be more reflective of the DMO branding that we're working with right now, so I look forward to what that will become. I know we have, we, when I say we, I mean, I've been worrying them to death and Monica too, about what that will be because again, we really want to get this right. But I appreciate the fact that we've also considered value engineering because we do know that sometimes the money is strange and we have to do our best to figure out what will work, and it's easier to do that ahead of time than circling and struggling, trying to figure out how to make it work. So I appreciate those aspects that are given. You have a really strong team. I see Caitlin in the audience, and I appreciate the work that's being done.
Any other comments?
I'll just briefly add, I think this is a net positive for the city. We have a visitor center now that is separate from downtown because of the interstate. And so to bring it downtown and to encourage people to spend their time there and to do so on foot, we've got a lot of really great sort of engineered walkability in that area as well. And for work, frankly, you know, we bring people in all the time. And for work, frankly, you know, we bring people in all the time and have them stay at the AC, and so to have that be right there, and it is sort of, you know, certainly one of the leaders in our sort of new wave of hotels and to have it downtown, it's exciting to continue the partnership that we've built there and continue to build on that. So this is really great stuff. I'm looking forward to seeing what it shakes out to be in finality, and I think that council is excited to have this, to be where it's going to be. And I hope you guys have seen and heard that tonight.
Great.
I agree with everything the council, my colleagues have said before me. I especially like this picture here on the side. I really like it. The only thing I have a question on, and I'm, is that chandelier. Where did the cactus come from? I'm just asking. It's not a Dundeeal, right?
No, 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 not at all. It's not going to be a cactus.
Thank you. Thank you, because I'm like, oh my God.
The whole design inspiration on this was to craft stories from local artisans, and so it's not, I think there's no mistaking that we didn't pull that one out of a magazine.
Oh my God, anyway.
It'll be one of a kind, though.
Where you put it on Sixth Street, that's a great place to put the Welcome Center in, because there's always folks walking around there on clay, on the Jackson and Mary and down Sixth Street. There's always people. You can drive by there anytime and you see people walking around. So I think that's a great place to put the Welcome Center in. And I hope when you do put the Waco sign, and it's a big sign, so people will know, hey, this is Waco's Welcome Center. But I'm not uneasy about that cactus.
Not native to Waco.
My two points.
So to speak. All right, great presentation. I just echo everything everybody says. This is great work, very excited about the new location. Great work, Lisa. The next item, where do you want to go here, Bradley?
Heading to Riverwalk.
Riverwalk.
Yeah, we're going to go with Work Session 115, Discussion of Riverwalk Project. Looking for council direction on our approach to rebidding this project. Paul Kane, our Assistant City Manager, as well as Rachel Williams, project engineer, will present on the status, including Resolution 155, it's on your agenda tonight to reject all bids, and particularly going to seek your input on some of the project elements that you would like us to prioritize. So Paul, you want to kick us off?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have Rachel Williams with me. I'd like to introduce her to you. She's our project engineer on this and doing an awesome job. So just a little bit of why we're meeting tonight about this, I wanted to brief you on the status and get some direction from you on rebidding. A little bit of background, as you know, the Riverwalk has always been a foundational element in the public side of the Riverfront Project. It runs from Webster to Baylor Law. We completed design in August of 20, in June of 2024, and bids were issued in September of '24. Just to refresh your memory, there are some elements of the Riverwalk that you see here that are unique to it. The Cove Bridge at the top left, the water wall underneath I-35, the event lawn that is between the lower walk and an upper walk, and then the Webster overlook. Those always have been elements of the project as we've gone through the design process and even through the bidding process. Another important element is the historical homage to Sandtown. That has been an important, probably a foundational element of this project to acknowledge the history of the area. That has been part of our base bid and will continue to be part of the base bid moving forward.
Thank you for that, Paul.
Yes, ma'am. So I want to go over the bid tab as we received it. We had a base bid that included the Riverwalk with the Cove feature and the water wall and the Webster overlook and the bridge under 35. And then we had some ad alternates on top of that, and you could see that we were, we had an opinion of probable cost in blue from our design team, and then the bids shown in green and yellow. And those bids came in substantially higher than our estimate and substantially higher than the amount of funds we have. We have about $26 million remaining for the project, and with all the ad alternates in, we were 36% over that amount, about $9 million. So going back to the drawing board on this, and what we're asking and recommending, as Bradley mentioned, tonight on the agenda, we have Resolution 155, which would reject all bids on the project. And then we would go back out with a rebid that includes the base, which is essentially the walkway from Webster to Baylor Law. It would include in the base bid, the Sandtown homage. And then we would have a number of ad alternates. And you see those, the major ones listed here in the yellow, alternate for the Webster overlook and the planters and seating around it, an alternate for the Cove Bridge that goes from one side of the Cove to the other. The Cove Fountain would be an alternate. This alternate lower walk, which would include the plaza, the lawn, if you want to call it, here. And then underneath 35, an alternate complete water wall feature, and that actually would be some subalternates. One would be just like a retaining wall, which we have to have. And the second would be to add in the elements you need for a future water wall, but not include all of the equipment that would take to make the water wall work, and then the equipment on top of the water wall. So we're trying to break that down as much as we can to provide a number of different options. And then last, at the far right, over near the Baylor Law School, we had a picnic area with some additional sidewalks and things in there to link the parking and the Riverwalk to some of the internal walkways behind the Ranger Side and ultimately over into Baylor. So we want to break it down into these segments. We hope to get a little bit more information from the contractors. It allows us to see what we can do within the 26 million we have budgeted. And so the purpose of tonight's discussion is to get council's direction or thoughts on, as you look at these yellow alternates that will be in the bidding, as we begin to put the package together and ultimately come back to the council for award, what's your wish on these alternates that you feel might be most important to the project, so we can weigh that as we bring the bids back to you for action later? Mayor, we would ask if there's any thoughts from council on any of these elements that you feel are maybe a priority over the others to give us some sense of that tonight, please.
Yeah, first of all, let me just clarify process, because we're going to take this back out to bid, and hopefully, because just looking at that page where we add the bids, the delta came in just the base bid, which seems odd to me. I would have thought there had been more delta in the waterfall and the overlook and the bridge construction, but...
The base was about $5 million over a deposit, and then you added another $4 million on top of that for all the ad alternates. That brought us to $9 million total.
So the logic of rebidding will be, or the process, or the strategy, maybe the strategy on rebidding will be to kind of make that base bid a more common...
We're essentially asking the contractors to tell us how much will it cost to build a walkway from Webster over to Baylor Law with the Sandtown homage included, and that will be our base. And then we'll add all these other things as options on top of that.
Yep.
And I neglected in my haste to go over the timeline. We finished preparing the bid documents and the construction documents for bidding, go to bidding in April. That'll be a 90-day process for the bidding. Award in August, and then go to construction in August of '25. It'll be about a two-year project.
So as you go for bids on this, we're not eliminating anything at this point.
We're not eliminating anything. We're just breaking it out into a number of different packages in an effort to maintain costs and keep within the budget.
But what you'd like from us this evening is what is our priority?
What do you like best in terms of these alternates that you might want to bring back? That will be helpful to us as we put the package together and make a recommendation later.
Or like, what could we live without type of a thing? Or is that not quite it?
Matt, I think I would say, when you look at these things here, which one of these are most important to you?
I personally, so right prior to, I know I've said this before in public hearing, but prior to interstate construction, you could, you know, go on a walk or run from Baylor Law or the stadium all the way down to Herring and back, and it made a loop pretty nicely, I think maybe a three to seven mile, I'm trying to think of what the, if you go all the way to Herring, it's pretty long, but for me, it was a fun like run downtown to the Suspension Bridge or Washington and come back. And since then, it's been disrupted. I think the interstate is not the reason anymore, but on this side, on the Foster Pavilion side and the downtown side, it's been under construction and kind of somewhat, I think the public is kind of accessing it somehow, but they shouldn't be. I'm looking forward to it just being aesthetic. I want Sandtown definitely non-negotiable. I think city is saying that, and I think council is saying that for sure. I would say that, you know, I definitely want that as the core of it. And then just an aesthetic, a base, an aesthetic walkway, if the water features prove to be kind of very, very expensive, I mean, we're on a river, there's some good water aesthetics there. I'm not married to those, but I do think the bridges and the overlooks and things like that do look really nice. And as long as it's an attractive pedestrian space, I feel like, you know, I'd be very happy with that. But with a big homage to where, what stood there before, the Sandtown heritage, I think would be.
If you need any history, Paul, I'm available anytime you need history about the Sandtown area and everything towards La Salle. That's where we grew up, in that area, before I-35, before Baylor, before...
Yes, ma'am.
There's not too many of us left that lived in Sandtown. Their relatives and their kids now obviously have either moved out of town or in another area of the city. But everybody's excited about, I'm sorry, the Sandtown area, because that was where our Hispanic businesses were located.
Yes, ma'am.
We had cleaners, we had grocery stores, we had everything you could think of there because it was a community, but I-35 broke it up. So in my opinion, also, kind of going along with Josh, the water wall, it's, you know, we're already by the river. I mean, you know, if that's too expensive, that's one area, that's one thing I wouldn't mind giving up, as long as that area in there is well-lit, you know, for the people that are walking by and riding bicycles too, so they don't hurt themselves or have an accident or whatever. But the water wall feature, I can do without. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
I think I'm on, you know, the, like my council members, the water features are definitely a nice-to-have, not a must-have. I also think that the parking, the Baylor Side parking, picnic area, whatever, I think that can, that may can wait.
Yeah.
As well as, what was it, something else? Oh, well, we said both the water wall and the fountain, so the water pieces and then the alternate picnic area improvements, I think those are nice-to-haves. I would also, if we can keep the Wi-Fi capability in, I think that would be a priority for me.
Okay.
If, I mean, if we can.
Sure.
Where's Mike? If we can.
The alternate Cove Fountain.
Mm-hmm.
That's not too important to me because we're already by the river. Now, if it's inexpensive to put in there because we are by the river, the fountain, then okay, but if it's too expensive, that's another no-no for me if it's too expensive, Paul. But because we're already by the river and people are already looking at water, I mean, it's the Brazos, but it's still water.
Love the Brazos. I'll keep it brief and say, if I had to pick to keep on this, the Webster overlook and the Cove Bridge, and then if I had to just pick one, if we're looking at costing on that, I would say Webster overlook. Everything else, I think, seems modular enough that if we have a windfall in five years, we can always go back and look at it. But the Webster overlook is probably the one that I would want to keep the most. Cove Bridge, a close second.
Okay, good.
My opinion would be, if there's one thing, I don't think a water wall's necessary, but I don't think there's anything that will ruin a walk quite like an interstate will. So to the extent we can make that area inviting for people, you know, however that is, it just, interstates are not great for walks.
What did you say? The sound would, in order for it to really mask out the sound of I-35, it would have to be, what'd you say, Niagara Falls?
I think it'd have to be something pretty significant to mask the sound completely.
Did that answer your question, George?
But, I mean, it'd be a lovely place for a nice mural, wouldn't it?
That would be. That would be great.
Probably put a sound system with some speakers in there. Might be a little cheaper.
White noise.
Just something that makes it inviting.
My wife and I took the Riverwalk from Hotel Emma to the San Antonio Art Museum, and they've got like hanging fish underneath the bridges and things like that that seem relatively inexpensive when you look at the larger scale that I think we could explore, to your point, because yeah, it does, it is less inviting than the rest of the trail. Yeah.
Bradley, can I ask an off-the-wall question? At any point in the future, are there any people that are vying to have a boat ride up and down the Brazos? Have anybody contacted us about?
We had one that was interested, but I think he's moved on. But I think it'd be fun, you know, my time in Waco, I've only been here since 2017, so I have an experience with Waco in all its glory with the boats and...
At my reception on the Brazos.
Brazos Queen and all that.
Well, I got to ride on the Brazos Belt up the Brazos, and that was an awesome experience, but...
It would be.
I didn't know if it, and also, how this is going to work in with Phase Four, Bradley? How would this look?
I think, you know, we're stopping just past Webster with this, and as we look to the future phases, yeah, the future phases of downtown, there'll be a missing link that at some point we'll have to connect up with those future phases. The missing link is serviceable, you can still access it, it just is that 1970s Riverwalk experience.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Great. I would say, I think y'all already know how I feel, Cove Bridge, because I just think that's welcome to Waco. I want something really cool out there. The fountain, I think we can put that into, and the overlook would be my top ones, water wall and the further down. But we're going to put it out the bid for everything, so we'll get a better idea on cost benefit when we see it.
We just wanted to get a sense from council when we bring something back, what your preference is. We doubt we'll be able to afford all of it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bradley, where do you want to do next?
We're going to let y'all take a break, and we're going to have a brief executive session. We'll need y'all to read us into the record for that.
All right, we're done with the work session. Now we have council requests for scheduling and future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? I don't hear any. So we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by interim Assistant City Secretary Irma Parker at 5:31 PM.
Item number one, Real Property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Downtown development project being the mixed-use development on city-owned and adjacent properties near City Hall. Item number two, Real Property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And number three, Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. The city council is now in executive session.